Join Desi Brown as he gives you inside access to industry leaders who are making it happen in entertainment, film, music, sports, and politics. It's the You Know, Desi Show.
Yo, 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 yo. It's the You Know, Desi Show, and we live in Dallas, Texas at Kwon Burton Studios. And I'm here with my partner, number three on the ballot, number one in your heart, Matt Canto. What's up, my brother?
What's going on, man?
How you been, man?
I'm blessed. How about you?
Man, I'm doing great. Thank you so much for taking the time to be on my show. You know, we've known each other for a long time, and, and so I'm always honored to be in your presence. You've always helped me, whether I was doing, you know, a marketing event, whether I was doing a charity event, whatever it is, one thing about you, you always say you go pull up. So I am excited about you running for city council, and that's why we're here today. Could you please talk about, I guess, the district or the area that you're running in? And explain, you know, how you got there started?
Well, thank you. I first want to say thank you for your time as well. You know, we have been knowing each other for a long time, and I feel like you're like a big brother to me. So I want to say thank you to you as well. Well, pretty much, I grew up in Oak Cliff my whole life. What I started to notice is that a lot of people that were governing the area or holding offices in the area, local municipal offices, were not from the area, didn't know what was going on in the area, didn't have a pulse of the area, but they were the ones that were leading us. And often, we were being led in the wrong direction. So I decided to say, you know what? Instead of complaining about the problem, I decided to be a part of the solution. So that's how we got here.
That's dope. And so Oak Cliff, what is that? What, what area is that? Is that the district or?
So, no, so it's great. Oak Cliff is so big. Oak Cliff used to be its own city, and Dallas annexed it. I'm not gonna give you guys a big history lesson, but it was annexed into Dallas. So Oak Cliff could very well be its own city, the size of it. So Oak Cliff is broken into multiple districts. I'm running for District Four, which is zip code 75216, 75232 partially, 75203, and 75224 as well.
Yeah, so for those who may not know that, you know, by zip code, kind of what area is that? Because I know we do a lot of charity event with, with my boy Taylor over there at 4O Cliff. So talk about kind of the area and the neighborhoods or the streets, if you, if you will.
Right, so yeah, 4O Cliff, for everyone that's listening, is in the heart of District Four. But Illinois is a big staple street in the area. You have Keyst, you have Pope runs in the district as well, people that know those streets. Lead Bird at Loop 12 runs in the middle of everybody know Big T. You know, we used to kick it at Big T. Shout out to Big T. That's right in the middle of the district. 35 runs straight through the middle between, you know, Saner. And then you got Saner, Illinois is again, you got Marcellus.
Okay, so, so quite a big area.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, so how did you, I guess, coming up in that area? I'm sure you've seen different transitions of it, you know? And, and where is it at now, you would say? And kind of where can you help?
That's a great question. We're at a crossroads in Oak Cliff, right? So just like every urban area, you travel a lot. So every urban area across the country is going through this to where there's gentrification going on. And that word scares a lot of minority and African-American people. But gentrification is not a bad thing when it's done the right way, but more importantly, when we're a part of the process.
Yeah.
And that's the key, right? So that's where I come in, because my vast business experience of helping grow successful businesses on my own, as well as being a part of businesses that are on that I helped grow as well, I can get in there. And when we're sitting at the table with these big investors and these big, you know, companies that want to come in and do business with us, I can make sure that they come in and do business fair, but also that we get a piece of the pie.
Yeah.
And not get screwed over, to be quite frank. Because so many times when gentrification happens, we've gotten screwed over. And that's why people are so alarmed and scared of gentrification is because, oh, my taxes are gonna go up. True, but guess what? The value of homes can go up as well.
Yeah.
So.
So you, when you hear about gentrification, a lot of times, we take it as the rich getting richer.
Yes.
But it's like, if you actually own a home, or whatever the case may be, and you're participating, now we can make sure that, that, that we benefit off that, you know, with the money coming in and what we're doing with the money as well. And then a lot of times, I look at it like, I, I've been working on a lot of projects for Black Men Vote, whether that's been in Atlanta for the Senate runoffs for Georgia, or when the presidential election, I did a big campaign for them in Philly. And so one thing, talking with some of the leadership over there out of New York, we've just been talking about how it's important for us to make voting and politics cool, right? You know, a lot of times politicians come through one time when it's time to vote, you know, but they're not there all the time, and they're like stuffy, you know what I'm saying? So you can't really relate to them.
Not cool. You don't, you don't see yourself in them.
Yeah.
That was Barack Obama's, one of his major assets to where he was so electable, and he got elected twice. You could, you know what? I see that brother barber shop.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm like him, you know? He was relatable to so many people, especially African-American men. And that's why he was able to get elected, along with him being very qualified. But some of the votes, just be honest, some of voting is just, you know what? That guy's cool. I like him.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and, and I think that's one thing about you is you're extremely relatable. You know what I'm saying? You utilize social media for things, and, and you know, you're just cool, you, you know? You know, we might catch you out at, at a restaurant or hanging out, but also in the community, making things happen as well. So, so talk about, you know, how you're able to relate to people and why you kind of understand the people in that district.
So that's one of the things I vow to myself and the people that are helping my team when I decide to run is that we're gonna do this, but I'm not gonna be the politician that changes. I'm not gonna be the politician that's not accessible. I'm not gonna be the politician that comes, becomes a completely different person when he's elected.
Yeah.
So even though you, you have to watch what you do and watch what you say, you know? You even counsel me on that as well. I still try to be as accessible as possible.
Yeah.
Still be with the people, you know, still, along while educating them on, hey, look, you know, you like what we're doing here, but if you get out and vote, we get people in office like myself and other people that have like-minded views. We can get more African-American ownership in this area, more businesses in this area. And then at the end of the day, we control our own narrative. You've done a great job of doing as well with the You Know, Desi Show. You're controlling your own narrative. You're giving people like me a platform to control my narrative as well. So it's one of those things where we have to start having ownership in every aspect of our life. Political ownership, financial ownership, a home. And I'm gonna touch on that real quick. It's funny, you said, you know, well, putting the money back in with your home, right? Well, we have to start, and it's not our fault, we weren't taught, but we have to get out of that now. We have to start looking at homes as investments, not just a house. It's an investment.
Yeah.
You know, if you do the right thing about home, it's one of the number one ways you can create generational wealth.
So. Yeah, and, and even touching on that, I'm getting really big on, you know, just paying attention with, you know, financial literacy and things like that.
So important.
Yeah, my dad passed away in September from cancer, and that was one. Appreciate you. And that was a big thing about him. He had retired from Raytheon a few years back, and then he was a pastor. But he was real big on making sure things were set up for my mom.
He was good.
Yeah, to where, to where my mom doesn't have to work unless she just want to. You know what I'm saying? So, so even understanding that, and, and you know, oftentimes, when people pass away, like they leave debt for their kids and their, and their loved ones. They, you know, they may not even have burial insurance or things like that. So in our communities, it's so important that we learn financial literacy early on so we can stay prepared. And we often don't want to have these conversations, but these are conversations that we need to have, you know?
So necessary. And to piggyback off of that, one of the things I would do when elected, I'm speaking into existence, is that I would, I would commission a task force day one in office to tackle issues like you just said, financial literacy. And what I would do is I would bring experts from all over the city, you being one of them, other people that have expertise in certain areas, and we'd sit down and we'd come up with a comprehensive, tangible plan for the district as well as the city, because we're all one at the end of the day.
Yeah.
And this plan would be consisted of things that we can do today, tomorrow, things we can do six months from now, a year, to make sure that the financial literacy, how about that's taught in the schools from grade school up? How about we catch people before they get in debt, or you get the payday loans and you get in this endless cycle? Because a lot of times, you know, hate to get spiritual, but there's a scripture, Hosea 4 and 6, you know, you come from a pastor.
Absolutely.
It says, "My people perish for the lack of knowledge." And we've been perishing for our lack of knowledge. So if we can curve that, I think that we can get on the right track and progress as a people.
Yeah, and, and, and I like that you touched on that, learning early on, right? If we catch this information early, that's even like, from a standpoint of investing and stocks and things like that. Like, a lot of times, we miss out on opportunities because we have no idea. Like, by the time we caught on with like, say like a Bitcoin or something like that, by the time it got to us, the people that had already made a lot of money off of it, and we catching the end, and we might make a little bit, but we not gonna catch what we would have caught.
We gonna get generational wealth, like you.
Exactly.
I'll tell a little story, it's funny, I like to tell stories because they're relatable. It was a.
Jesus spoke in parables.
He did, the whole Bible. It was Magic Johnson. Nike came to him and was like, hey, look, we don't have a whole lot of money right now to give you, but we can give you stock. Magic said, "I'm from East Lansing, Michigan, I don't know nothing about no stock. Converse was offering me money." I was like, "Yeah, I'll take the money right now." He said, "Every time I walk by Nike store and see something in there, I just do like this." Because he realized how much money he could have had. They were offering him $100,000 of stock in the eighties. They did the, economists did the breakdown, they said that had been worth like $300 million right now.
That's great. Yeah.
Thirty years, $300 million? Like that's, but Nike has done it well.
Yeah.
He didn't know.
Yeah.
People like, feel Nike knew what shares would be meant to him 30 years down the line. But we didn't know, and it's, I don't blame Magic, but that's just a story, a tale to a story to how if you don't know, it can really cost you. So we gotta make sure that our people know.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of conversations with my son about things like that, because, you know, he plays football and he just committed to Stanford. So he'll be going to, you know, Stanford this summer.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, and so like, I've already kind of been telling him about Bitcoin and the importance of stocks, and, and you know where Stanford is in Silicon Valley. I'm like, he may stumble upon some opportunities.
Real quick, you might not even heard about here.
Exactly.
Your dad, you know?
Yeah, uh-huh. And next year is also the first year that college athletes can make money off their own likeness. So it may be some opportunities down the line for him, like, oh, well, we want you to do marketing for this, or we want you to do this, and, you know, we'll give you shares, you know? So I'm just trying to kind of mentally prepare him for opportunities that, that may come along the way.
Well, they also, we'll have to have another show, but it also goes to show you that having an active father, African-American, if I'm just gonna go ahead and say it, in our children's lives matters, because you're there to guide him and to show him. So he doesn't have to make the mistakes that you made, that I made, because you've done it, and he sees that. Hey, my daddy's been there the whole time. I trust him. You can be that safeguard for him. And a lot of times, we don't have that in our community, for so many different reasons. So I'm not saying, you know, it's because of what we've done. For so many different reasons, and that goes to show you another reason why our communities need strong young African-Americans as well, because relatable.
Yeah.
People can relate to you. You come from Greenville. I can relate to you. You look like me. We look like each other, a little darker. But he gets my brother.
He's got all he likes.
We had to get extra light.
But, but yeah, that's so important, and exposure is really important, right? Like Barack was the exposure for politics, because before that, we didn't really look at politics like that.
Not at all.
You know, now it's like, you know what? I can be a president, you know? A young girl now is looking at Kamala, like, I can be a vice president or a president. You know, because we have those examples. I always find it important to go to career days and to speak at schools and different things like that, because I feel like I'm successful, but I'm not an athlete, you know what I'm saying? I'm not a rapper. Like, no, you can, you can still be cool and make money and do other things outside of just, you know, playing basketball, being a drug dealer, whatever, you know, the things that they always see in, in, in the community. Like, no, you can do something different. So let's make sure that exposure is there for the kids.
So true. I'm an example as well. I'm not an athlete. I used to play, but I'm not an athlete, didn't go to the NFL.
Yeah, you're not.
Gained a little weight, you know? I'm not, I'm not an athlete, but I've been able to have successful businesses. I've been able to be in corporate America as well. And didn't come from any generational wealth, but hard work and dedication, you can get anywhere. But coming back, it's so big for me as well. I got asked, my English teacher's watching, I got asked, how, how is it that you come back to Oak Cliff? People were asking me, why you didn't move to Frisco, Allen, Red Oak, you know? I said, because if everyone, and no disrespect to those communities, but if everyone moves out of the inner city of Oak Cliff, there's gonna be no examples for those young men and women to see people look like them, being successful, that are not drug dealers, pimps, murderers. There's positive people that do regular jobs, that make an honest living, that are successful as well.
Yeah, you know, who was it? I think it was the story about Chris Rock tells about living in a nice neighborhood.
He did, yeah.
Yeah, and it's like, he said, he lives in the neighborhood, Jay-Z in the neighborhood, and Mary J Blige's in the neighborhood, you know? And they're like, you know, at the top of their craft. But then he like, the white guy next door is a dentist.
White guy dentist, doctor, and that's, it's so crazy you say that. We're, and it's so sad, but we're the only race of people that have to do something extraordinary to make a lot of money. There's so many people in the Dallas world area that are so rich that we never know their name. And it was, I was hearing a story earlier, and they were saying, if Jerry Jones did not own the Dallas Cowboys, he could still be worth 8.5 billion dollars, we would never know who he was.
That's crazy.
But he's worth 8.5 million dollars, like, before he bought the team, he was rich. We didn't know who he was.
Right.
He was a regular guy. The old guy.
Uh-huh.
So we can make so much money off of different avenues, but I'm so excited, because we have people like you, like me, like Kwon, KB, because there's people out here showing young African-American men and women that, hey, there's other ways you can take to still be successful. Still buy that range, or still buy that Rolex, whatever you want to buy. You don't have to be an athlete to do it either.
Yeah, and, and, and you started talking about things, and that made me, you know, think about another thing that we need to understand. I think it was, is his name, Mr. Wonderful from Shark Tank?
Yes, that's him.
Yeah, so he always talks about, you can buy nice things, but buy things that appreciate. So he has like a clip on YouTube where he's talking about the watches to get, you know? Like, we always want to get the watch, but, the bust down, you know what I'm saying?
I looked, I might have died, wouldn't have looked a little bit. I didn't buy it, but yeah, yeah, you're right.
But the Rolex that doesn't have all the diamonds is the one that's gonna hold its value and appreciate nine times out of 10.
When I saw that video, I Googled it. It was a Rolex, just no diamonds, just a regular gold Rolex with a black background. It was from the eighties, it was worth $12,000.
Yeah.
I was like, what? So he was right.
And same with, he would even talk about how his mom, I guess, had certain dresses or handbags and things like that. But they were things that would always appreciate, and nine times out of 10, they just wanted to keep it in their family.
Absolutely.
You know, as opposed to going and buying all these things that, you know, because like a car, for instance, soon as you drive it off the lot, it depreciates. So, you know, making sure we understand that while we're understanding the importance of financial literacy and everything else. Like, it's cool to shine, but just do it within reason.
Within reason, and it goes back to the education piece we spoke on, it goes back to catching them right earlier. It also goes back to teaching and showing your kids, like you said, in the African-American community, it was always taboo to talk about the bills, to talk about life insurance, or credit, different things like that. Well, we have to start bringing, and you doing it with your son, we have to start bringing our kids in, hey, look, this is what I make.
Yeah.
This is how much it costs to live here. This is what I'm spending, right? So this is how much I can save, this is how much I have in my retirement. We have to have those conversations, because that'll eliminate, I had talked to so many African-Americans that are older, and say, I just didn't know, no one ever told me.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and we, and, and that's why I wanted to have this platform, because I wanted to pass that information on. Because a lot of times, too, we'll get some money and we'll move away and don't share any of that. And I feel like we have a responsibility as black men, as we come up, it's very important to push that elevator back down. You know, and give the next generation a chance. And, and that's why I'm also encouraged by you running as well, is because, like, no matter what, if, if you're in office, you always gonna pour into that next generation and be able to bring people up. Because I always felt like in Dallas, that was kind of a disconnect with the older political generation, and.
Still is.
Yeah, and, and so it's like.
I'm biting it now, honestly, so it still is.
Yeah, and it's like, you know, I don't want to call nobody out or anything like that.
We won't, today, we won't do it today.
Yeah, but I look at it, like, even on a national level, right? I love Al Sharpton. Okay, he do what he do, right? But should we still be calling Al Sharpton 50 years later, 25 years later? Like, who didn't, what's the next generation that we can lean up, lean to?
Where's the next Al Sharpton? Where's the next Roy Swizz? Where's the next Eddie Bernice Johnson? And those two people have played a big impact in my life, because Barack Obama was the president. But those people were local, who I actually got to see coming to the school and doing career days, and see that they, these people were politicians and black. So they laid the groundwork. I wouldn't even be able to run if it wasn't for people like them. But it's, the big question is, where's that next generation of leaders coming from? And I want to be a part of that. And I think by me doing this, win or lose, I'll motivate more people, because the work is just beginning.
Yeah, and, and, and that's what I also want to do. Like, I never wanted to personally be a politician or anything like that, but I want to be able to connect with people like yourself and get them, and give you all a platform, give you a spotlight, like, yo, we pulling up where you, where you need me at. You know, I'm one of those type of people, and so, you know.
I watched the video, you're the connector.
Exactly.
I watched the video, I pay attention, I watched the video. It is true, though, it was really cool how you did it, but you know some of everybody. And if we can have people like you, we usually don't have people like you in our community, that we can call and say, hey, look, I don't want you to give me anything. I just want you to put me in a room, I'm gonna work, I'm ready to roll my sleeves up and do whatever it takes to get an opportunity. And that's all we need most of the time, is somebody to put us in a room, and you've done that a lot, not only for me, but for a lot of people. I think back, I'm like, this has had me in rooms. I'm like, how am I in this room? What am I doing here? I don't belong here, but I appreciate it.
But that's the thing, you do belong there, and like, me and you have known each other long enough and had enough conversations behind the scenes, that I feel comfortable putting you in these rooms, because, one, I know you're about to work, and, two, I know you ain't gonna embarrass me. So I ain't even gotta worry about it.
Good point.
You know what I'm saying? Yeah, like, and, and I say, you always support anything that I have going. Like, we had had this plan for a while to do this, and then between me and you planning this, we got to call, me and Bebe and Gio, to, to do the Tory Lanez water giveaway. And so I knew you had a lot going on, but I still sent it to you, and what? You, hey, bro, I'm pulling up, you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? Shout to Tory Lanez, we've been giving his umbrella water away.
Good water.
Yeah, and Dallas, Shreveport, San Antonio, and surrounding areas. So it ain't even dropped yet, but it's good alkaline water. Shout out to them. But, but yeah, man, so I wanted to get into really quickly, you know, just, just talk about, you know, the differences between like, I guess, local politics, right? Because for instance, like, we're in Texas, and during the pandemic, there's been a lot of back and forth between, say, like, the Republicans and the Democrats, but even on like a local level. So, so you'll have like Governor Abbott say one thing, but then you'll have, as a judge.
Clay Jenkins.
Clay Jenkins.
Yes, Clay Jenkins.
And then you have mayor.
Eric Johnson.
Yes, so, so talk about the differences, because it seems like every time there's an announcement made, you may have Abbott say one thing, Jenkins says one thing, and then Johnson says another thing. So talk about the differences and how they work together.
It's like a, a sitcom or a soap opera, to be honest with you. So ultimately, the governor has the control over the whole state. That's how America works. Every state has state rights, the governor controls the state. But what happens is when he does say, okay, we're gonna have no, no mask anymore, May 10th, you know, mask mandate is lifted, Minnesota's gonna occupy it 100%. Well, then Clay Jenkins comes in and say, well, I'm gonna file a lawsuit to, to get this denied. And then it goes to the Texas Supreme Court, and then if they keep going back and forth, it'll go to a circus of appeal court, and it'll keep going up the ladder. And the reason why he does that is to buy time, say, okay, because usually they'll put a stay in. And while it stays in, they'll still have to adhere to, you know, the mask mandates until the judge makes a ruling. Now, with this case, it's already went up to where they have not had to adhere to the rules, so we don't have to abide by it. Pretty much all it is, is Clay Jenkins and Eric Johnson trying to protect citizens, because ultimately, I mean, and this is just my personal opinion, if you say, I, I didn't have a problem with opening up, because it's been, it has been a while. But when you say no one has to wear a mask, now you're putting other people's lives at risk, because you don't want to follow the rules, or you don't want to, and that's not okay. So in this situation, I think it was solely because Eric Johnson and Clay Jenkins wanted to help protect the citizens of Dallas, and a little bit of politics, but that's what it is, politics in there, because their base supports that as well.
Yeah, and, and talk about, I guess, the level that they are, because, you know, until, like, you would think that, I guess, Eric Johnson would be the one making the decisions. So what's his role versus like Judge Clay Jenkins? Because, and where did Judge Clay Jenkins come from, so to speak?
Right, so, good, great question.
Because he's not the mayor, he's not the.
On the municipal city level, the county judge and the county commissioner, who's John Waddy Price, have a lot of power, along with the city manager. The mayor, I'm not saying he doesn't have a power, but the mayor, it's just like the president and Congress. The mayor has the city council that's underneath him, and they have to vote on things to get them passed. The mayor just can't come out one day and issue, you know, this, this is what we're gonna do. Now, he can issue an executive order, or in that level, it'd be an ordinance. But he can't just go make a rule and think it's gonna just apply to everybody. There's levels to it. But Clay Jenkins, as the county judge and the county commissioner, have more power to make, to make things happen than the actual mayor. And that's where it comes in, and those are elected officials as well. So you have to run for county commissioner, you have to run for county judge. So those positions are elected, and that people, we don't pay attention to those type of elections, but those elections are so important, because the county judge, like you just mentioned, has a lot of control of what goes on in your city.
Exactly, and, and that's what, you know, and, and I'm not super, super into politics like that. So I didn't even understand that until when the pandemic first started. It was like Abbott would say something, and then immediately Clay Jenkins would go against it. And it was like, how does he have all this power? Like, you know, we thinking traditional judge, like, oh, okay, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, he has a lot of power. He pretty much is the legal representative, representative of the whole county of Dallas. So he can, like I said, literally send his communications directly to the governor. I didn't have to go through nobody.
Right, and then I was, and then I was feeling bad, like, me just looking, like, because you know, like, of course, Eric Johnson, he black man, so I'm trying to support the black man, and I'm feeling like Abbott is saying stuff, and like, and, and the mayor is sending out emails saying this, like, man, this ain't right. You know what I'm saying? But he kind of like on the sidelines, why these two are kind of going at it. So that's why, and that's why I was feeling like, wait, he the mayor. Like, they up here fighting, and the mayor's like, man, yeah, they tripping.
He did, it literally, it sounded like that, like, I wouldn't do it if I were you, and stuff like that. But, and that goes back to what we were talking about, we need more people to understand that, and we need more African-American judges.
Yeah.
When I announced that I was running, I mentioned that, we need more African-American judges. Judges are a very powerful position. When the Supreme Court went down, where Trump got to issue, got to, excuse me, appoint three associate justices to the Supreme Court, that is so major, because guess what? That's a lifetime appointment.
Yeah.
There's no term limit on it. So these three conservative judges that have views that are really, really normally skewed against African-Americans, they could be there for 40 more years.
Right, yeah.
Voting on laws that adversely affect us. But we need more African-American judges, and we need more on the local level, state level, and the federal level as well. So that goes back to the education as well. Hey, you know, it's cool, you know, Judge Clay Jenkins, that's a pretty good job.
Right, yeah.
You know, he's doing okay for himself, he lives pretty good. We don't pump that enough, I think, into our communities.[1592.14] But it's, the narrative's changing. We just gotta keep going and keep pushing it.
Yeah. And then talk about the frequency of these local positions, right? Because typically, and especially even when Obama got in the office, I felt like we were lulled asleep. Like,
We were.
Okay. He got four years. We good. Oh, he got another four. We good. But nobody was really focused on the local elections.
That's a great question and it's so true. So local elections on the municipal level for our city council in the city of Dallas. Each municipality is a little different, but most of the major ones are every two years.
Okay.
City council level. The mayor, uh, mayoral race is every four years.
Okay.
So, but what happened, and to take it to the Barack question, it's so true. So the presidential's course every four years, but the congressional seats are every two years.
Okay.
And then your senate seats are every six years. What happened to Barack, and he mentioned it on his, with his interview on The Breakfast Club. He said, um, I think African Americans got out behind me and voted in number, record numbers like we've never seen before. I got elected and they said, oh, praise God, we're good. We got him in there and we went back to sleep. Like you said, lulled asleep. So that next congressional election, we didn't show up. We lost the control of the House of Representatives.
Yeah.
And what happens when you do that is any bill that will be passed for the country starts at the House of Representatives. And if you can't get it from the House of Representatives, it can't get to the senate.
Yeah.
So we lost control of that. So every time you try to do something, it would get denied.
Yeah.
So people, I have people, you probably heard him, Barack Obama didn't do anything for us.
So it was difficult for him. Yeah.
This is not a monarchy.
Right.
He has to have, uh, Congress, uh, Congress cooperate on both sides. The House of Representatives of lower Congress and the United States Senate is high Congress. They all have to cooperate for him to be able to get anything done. And he didn't have control over his last, I think, four years in office, maybe longer than that. And it was hard for him to get stuff done.
Yeah. And, and then talk about the importance of, uh, you know, the, the big thing recently was winning the, the two senate seats in Georgia. So talk about why that was so important for those who may not understand it.
Great, uh, great question. You got all the good questions today. So, um, pretty much those two senate seats was gonna tilt the balance for the Democrats. Right? It was forty-eight, fifty before those two senate seats were flipped. And once those were flipped, it's fifty, fifty down the middle. Now, since we have the White House, the, uh, per the constitution, the vice president is the president of the senate. So in when a tie, she would always cast the tie breaking vote.
Gotcha.
Since it's democratic, we have control of it. So that's why those two seats were so important, but it's, I'm glad it happened that way. Because it showed us how important every single election is. It's really that close to us getting stuff passed for civil rights, George Floyd, for, uh, H one, H R N one, which is the Voting Rights Act. You know, because they're still trying to suppress the vote because they figured now if we cannot suppress the vote, we might not ever win again.
Right.
Because the minorities, we're becoming the majority. So they're really scared of us voting. And if, like my mama always would say, if they're that scared of us voting, that must mean it's pretty powerful.
Exactly. Yeah. And, and, and I feel like there's almost, should be an opportunity for us to flip Texas at some point. If we really get out there and do what we gotta do. I know historically it's super, super difficult, but.
You heard it first here. I'm working on some things for that. So, uh, maybe potentially Stacey Abrams might come here and give me some counsel advice. I'm working on a, a pact for Texas. I haven't told anybody this. This is gonna be.
Exclusive, exclusive on the You Know Desi Show.
Worked some really, really powerful people that were, you know, uh, have gotten behind me and my uncle in Houston. I'm working on getting a pact here solely to do that. I saw what Georgia did and I looked at the numbers. We have the numbers here to do the same thing they've done. We just gotta get everybody out and vote.
Yeah.
Stacey Abrams did a tremendous job of getting everybody out to vote and flipping that state. And so hopefully, you know, everybody, I'm praying that eventually, once I get everything in order, maybe I can get a meeting with her and get her advice to come here. So we can do the same thing here because if we do that, it's a game changer. And I think even in this next governor, uh, governor's race, I think, um, we might have a chance at flipping that as well. You know, there's a couple, Beto has really been floated out there as he might run and I hope he does. I think we can flip Texas to be a blue state within the next five to 10 years for sure. So you're absolutely correct. We need to, we have to.
Yeah. And, uh, and you know, it was, it was dope when, uh, when Beto was running for, I guess.
Senate.
Senate, when he was running for senate.
Can't crew cruise.
Yeah. When he was running for senate, uh, I had a, a couple of great opportunities to interact with him at, um, where were we at? We were at Paul Queen one day. And then, uh, also had an opportunity to go to church with him. At Friendship West with Senator Royce West and, and him. So that was, you know, yeah. So he was, he's really, really, really a cool cat. So I'm hoping that he does run because he had a lot of people behind him.
A whole bunch.
Yeah. I don't think he was really prepared to try to run for president.
He wasn't. That's a big undertaking.
Yeah. But I think, uh, here in Texas, he's definitely needed and definitely has the support to win whatever it is that he's running for.
He was out during the winter storm. You would have thought he was a governor.
Yeah.
What he was doing. He traveled all over, drove, packed his car up to all different counties that were in need, bringing them water, trailers full of water, literally him driving. So he's definitely liked here. I think he has a good shot. Uh, I just hope he does. And we need him because our governor right now has did some things that are very, very questionable and put a lot of minorities in adverse positions. And I just hope people are paying attention to what's going on, you know?
Yeah. And, and since you brought that up, talk about, you know, um, you know, the, the recent snowstorm and, you know, where the government failed us and, you know, and also how Texas is set up a little bit different than other states.
So, and I don't blame anybody for not knowing this because this is like, unless you're literally into politics, you wouldn't know this at all. So years ago, um, between, uh, George Bush, who was the governor of Texas before, and Rick Perry, they, uh, did some deals with private energy companies to take Texas off the national grid. We used to have a, we do have a national grid and Texas was a part of it. So when things like this would happen, okay, cool. We get some power from Louisiana, Arkansas, Oklahoma, New Mexico. Well, they said, eh, we're not gonna do that. We're gonna take us off the private grid, I mean, the, the national grid. We're gonna make it private. They did that because their friends, Texas is the energy capital of Houston. They did that because their friends that donate a lot of money to their campaigns are the CEO and board members of these energy companies.
Yeah.
We're gonna give you all the business. So they, once again, there's, there's an example of a government official making a, a decision to benefit him and not the people. And when things happen like this snowstorm, we're all screwed. We have rolling blackouts. That should have never been the case in a state like Texas. It's the energy capital of the world, but we don't have any power.
Yeah. That was crazy.
It was wild.
Yeah. And then, you know, you could also see where they were trying to like, where, uh, he came out very quickly to kind of like shift the blame
Yes.
off of, you know, off of him. You know what I'm saying?
When you point one finger, they always say there's four pointing back at you. He really, real quick, it was, you know, people started resigning, getting fired. A lot of people started running scared because they knew that this was all, they really didn't ever anticipate nothing like this. They thought we could do that. No one would ever really know about it because Texas is not gonna get that cold.
Yeah. But, and, and you know, if you go back to, what was it? When we had Super Bowl and when we had, uh, All-Star? There were some issues back then that, you know.
They gave you a, a preview of what, what could have came. And it did come, right?
Yeah.
You're absolutely correct. And it's, once again, why we need Beto in there because we gotta get Texas back on the national grid. That's so dangerous. They said we were about 10 minutes from people being without power for months.
Yeah.
So we can't have, that's just unacceptable. So.
Yeah. And, and then, uh, also, uh, bringing up the winter storm, I know you were out, you know, highlighting some of the discrepancies in areas.
You saw that, huh?
Yeah. 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 So, you know, if you over in this nice neighborhood, they had the, the, the bridges had, I guess, sand or salt or whatever. You know, Texas can never keep that together. I think it's supposed to be salt for real.
It is. It is supposed to be salt.
Yeah. And then when you're in Oak Cliff, you know, ain't been no truck through, nothing like that. So talk about that.
So there goes to one of the, one of the platforms that I'm running on, infrastructure, public works, code compliance. So when you're, that's the, one of the sole jobs of the city council is to make sure that the infrastructure, the streets are up to par. So in situations like that, we pay taxes in Oak Cliff, just like everyone else pays taxes. But they are so used to giving us the scraps and not necessarily having to be held accountable for us that they don't care. So perfect example. I, I knew it was gonna be the way. I got out in the snow. I went to streets in North Dallas. The streets were cleared. They had snow. It was, it was safe to drive. Well, it wasn't, I'm not gonna say it was safe. It was safer to drive. I go to Oak Cliff, go to Illinois, I go to Keys, a sand truck or a salt, salt truck had not touched it. They didn't even clean the snow out. It was still snow on the bridges and on the grounds.
Yeah.
So I called the city and said, hey, look, you know, there's no, uh, salt on the ground, no snow, no sand, no trucks have been through it, even clear it out. They said, oh, oh, well, we're getting to, you know, where we've been so hard behind. I said, okay, that's fine, ma'am. I said, but I've did my own research. I went to North Dallas and I seen the trucks, uh, they have cleared out the roads. She said, yeah, you know, but we usually do it, you know, based on geography first. So there we have it. So with that being said, the council man or woman, when as soon as it hit, should have been on the phone with, with the infrastructure, with the code compliance, with her administrative assistant, making sure that, hey, look, I have people over here that can't afford to miss work.
Yeah.
And they had, some of them are public service, some of them are doctors, some of them are lawyers, some of them just have to go to work. Simple fact that they're gonna miss a meal or their kids won't eat. Or they might get evicted or the lights will get cut off. They can't pay their light bill.
Right.
So with that being said, they pay taxes, they pay your salary. We need to get somebody over there to clear your streets out. That's when your city councilman or woman comes in to make sure that they're advocating. It's usually just a phone call.
Right.
People respect what you, what you expect. And we need somebody to be there to advocate and make sure the job is getting done for District Four. And I'm the guy to do that.
Yeah. So, so, um, before I get you out of here, talk about the timing of everything. When is the, um, when is the election? When is it coming up? How can we support you? How can, you know, uh, people vote for you? What area? Cause I know that's a little different as well, depending on where you live, if you can vote and things like that. So kind of lay it out for everybody before I get you out of here.
So you have to live in the district, to be a registered voter in the district, to be able to vote for me. And that's District Four Dallas. So like I said earlier, I'm gonna say it again. Seven, five, two, one, six, seven, five, two, three, two, seven, five, two, two, four, and parts of seven, five, two, three, two. Or the district that I'm running for. You can go to my Instagram at VoteCanto. On that Instagram, you'll see the link to my website. That's VoteCanto.com. And you can get all the details about, you know, our campaign and what we stand for and what we're trying to do. If you would like to volunteer or donate, please go to at VoteCanto.com and you can get all the details there as well. Please, please follow me on my Instagram, on my Facebook as well.
And when is the election?
The election is May first. That's the first Saturday in May, first day of May. May first, 2021 is the election. Early voting starts April the 19th through the 27th.
Okay. And, and so May first is, is that the last day?
That's the actual election day is May first.
Okay. And then after you win, because we speaking at it in this instance.
Come on now.
So after you win, uh, when would you take office after?
June. Okay. I get sworn in. I would get sworn in in June.
Yeah.
And then the first council meeting would be in August.
And, uh, and how long have the, I guess, the other people been in place? Have, have we had the same council member in this district?
Yeah. She's been, she's been there for a while. Carolyn King Arnold is the incumbent. Um, she's been there since fifteen. She's been the representative for this.
Since 2015?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So she go get out the way this year?
Yes, yes, yes. We're gonna, we're gonna get out the way.
Okay. Cool, 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 cool. And, um, and I guess by, I know you're a Democrat, I guess, how do you, how do you run?
Good question. So, um, city council level is a nonpartisan position.
Okay.
So you don't have to, uh, you don't have to declare with any particular party.
Okay.
So that's, that's the beauty of that position as well. You don't have to come out with any particular party, but.
Okay.
Most majority of them are Democrats.
Yeah. And then how many people are in this race?
Uh, there's five people in the race.
Okay.
I'm third on the ballot, but I'm number one in your heart.
There you go. VoteCanto. Man, thank you so much for being on the You Know Desi Show.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. So once again, VoteCanto.com, uh, VoteCanto on Instagram. It's the You Know Desi Show. Anything else, brother?
I just want to thank you again for the opportunity. Um, I really appreciate it. It's always a pleasure to sit down and chop it up with my brother. And like he said, please, please get out and vote. If you know anybody that lives in the district, tell them about my movement. And let's, let's go up together. We, not me.
There you go. You Know Desi Show.